Good evening. It is Monday, July 12th, 2021, 5:00 PM. And I'd like to call this committee the whole, the Lansing City Council, to order. And ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present, participating in the building.
Councilmember Hussein?
Present.
Councilmember Wood?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Dunbar?
Present.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Present.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you. There is a quorum present. First item of business are the minutes from June 21st, 2021. Mr. Vice President?
Sure. I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
Minutes have been moved. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Didn't that feel good? All right. Next up is public comment on our agenda items. Those wishing to make public comment, please drop your comment cards in the bin. We will do it, though, first come, first served. Those are just for the record. So you have three minutes to speak and you may address us from the microphone. And we ask that you keep your comments to the items on the agenda this evening. Jim, go for it.
Thank you very much. Jim Delain, 2520, R.A.M., in Lansing. I'm here to speak on the two items on your agenda that had to do with putting a charter change on the November ballot. First of all, I want to thank the city council for giving this new thing, this new creative way of advancing democracy, this new way of empowering voters through every consideration. And I especially want to thank the city attorney's office, Jim Smurka, he's a agent, the office has done their diligence.
What you have before you tonight are resolutions that are succinct, easy to understand, and legally solid. So thank you very much. I want to make one thing clear, not so much to the council, but to members of the public. What is under discussion tonight is not should the city of Lansing do ranked choice voting yes or no. What's under discussion tonight is, is there reason to put on the November ballot a charter change that would bring ranked choice voting to the city of Lansing? If you put this on the November ballot, I'll be voting yes. But not everybody will. And that's not the important thing. Whether or not you are for ranked choice voting, surely you can't be against putting it on the ballot and letting the voters of Lansing decide. When ranked choice voting was on the ballot in the city of New York, it passed by 73.5%. That's a lot. But it means that 26.5% of the people were either against it, or they didn't understand how positive, what a positive change it could be. If placed on the ballot in November, I and others will right away get to work educating the public on ranked choice voting, advocating for ranked choice voting. I'm asking council tonight to pass these unanimously. The voters of Lansing can be trusted. Please let the voters of Lansing decide whether ranked choice voting is right or not for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delain. Any others wishing to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Lansing Board of Water Light. It's the fiscal year ending 6/30/2022 budget and capital forecast for FY 22 through 27 with Dick Pefley and Heather Shawah. And I see Scott Taylor on the agenda, but I think Scott's going to stay in the audience. All right. Dick, Heather, welcome. You're our first presentation in the brave new world.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. And we are here tonight to do a brief presentation on the FY 22 BWL O&amp;M and six-year capital budget, which was submitted as required by city charter. As council president stated, Heather Shawah, the CFO of the Board of Water Light is here, and also Scott Taylor, manager of finances, is here. And I'm Dick Pefley, general manager of the Board of Water and Light. Before we go into the brief presentation, there is a couple of highlights I'd like to point out to you is that we had an approved rate hike for all utilities last year. We did suspend that due to COVID. And we also had a forecasted hike for this year, rate increase. And I also requested the commissioners consider waiving that, which they have. So we haven't had a rate hike for last or this year, but we're still able to maintain the service quality that our customers have come to expect. Second, one thing that is very important to us is I know that everybody remembers how the Board of Water Light was a second utility and a company to remove lead service pipes. We're embarking on a new adventure. We have 800 miles of water pipe in the city of Lansing. And the pipe has about 100-year life. So we should be replacing eight miles a year so that we can replace our entire infrastructure. Historically, we've replaced between one and two miles. So we're not catching up. So for the first time, we have an approved budget and a funding mechanism to replace the entire water system in the city of Lansing. We will start ramping up over the next few years to replace eight miles of pipe a year so that we are on a schedule, so that we have completely replaced the TND system, and will help us back off on or eliminate all the main breaks that we have and any kind of water quality issues. That's a long-term program, but if you look around the country and try to find another water utility that has a funded replacement for its entire TND system, it'd be hard to find one. We have one. We'll ramp up this year a little bit, and then within the six-year forecast, we'll be to eight miles of pipe. It is my intention and hope to have Board of Water Light staff do that, but that's a big hurdle. And we've got four years or so to get workforce modifications and work rules and employees. We don't have enough employees right now to do that kind of work, but we'll be looking at doing that. So those are in this year's budget kicked off, and you'll see our water TND budget ramps up to about $15 million a year. But a lot of work to get there, but it's been probably 20 years of trying to get there, and this budget accomplishes that and funds it into the future so that we can replace the eight miles that we need to do. So it's very good news. I will turn that over to Heather for the presentation.
Thank you, General Manager Pefley. Good evening. It's nice to be here in person. A couple of highlights. In the packet that was sent over, we did have our fiscal '22 operating budget and cash flow, as well as our six-year capital forecast. So it shows our current fiscal year '22, and then I'll highlight the six-year forecast on our capital. So a few highlights, as General Manager Pefley stated, no rate increases. We had one initially forecasted for fiscal '22. However, we were able to defer that. This does delay, however, our multi-year strategy to reach our targeted rate of return, which is important and required to continue to maintain and replace our infrastructure as needed. However, initially, we were meeting that target 2024 in the prior forecast. This current forecast does get us back to achieving that with a two-year delay 2026. We also benefit from deferring the rate increases. We are focusing on a rate strategy that we are planning to implement to work on our competitiveness and make sure that, especially for our business, our CNI customers, so that also deferring the rate increase and looking at efficiencies internally allows us to help attract businesses to our area. This budget supports our new strategic plan, which our board of commissioners adopted this past January. So all the major initiatives that are either ongoing and still underway to be implemented and new ones, our budget does support that over the six-year forecast. It also supports key financial metrics, including our required days cash on hand, our debt service coverage. It keeps us compliant with our bond covenants and helps keep our borrowing costs down with our above-average or above-benchmark rating affirmation that we have and recently received from our rating agencies. A few details specific to fiscal '22. Our revenue budgeted is just over $392 million. Our total operating income, $52.3 million, and a net income of about $568,000 for fiscal '22. Again, while that doesn't get us to our targeted rate of return, which is currently 4.2%, we get halfway there. And then also, as discussed, by the end of the forecast period, we do meet with all utilities, the targeted rate of return at 4.2%. Moving on to the capital forecast, oh, before I move on to that, on the income statement that was provided, we also, you'll see a line item that shows the return on equity payment to the city as well. So that's line item on the income statement. Our fiscal '22 capital budget is a strong $73 million for fiscal '22. The slide in the packet that was provided shows it by utility, broken down by utility and location. Our six-year forecast is $441 million of capital. And this is all funded with operating cash flows. That concludes my highlights and brief overview. I'm happy to take any questions.
Sure. I have a real quick question before I move to Councilmember Wood. There's 2027, there's Eckert capital improvement. Is that just shutting that down? What's that CIP?
I'll take it. It is both. There is securing the property with the generating unit being down. However, we still have a switchyard.
Oh.
So the TND part of that location still needs to be maintained.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. With the deferment of the rate hikes for the two years, is the plan then to gradually integrate those in, or is it going to jump? Okay.
No, no. Great question. Thank you for asking that. We did have some efficiencies and cost improvements. We did have, due to COVID, some cost deferrals. So we were able to defer the rate increase for fiscal '22 without adding additional increases over the forecast period. So our goal is to stay at or under inflation with our rate increases.
One key to that, Councilmember Wood, is that typically if we have a half a million in uncollected debt, you know, I'm jumping up and down.
I was going there next.
It's 11 million right now. So we're
What is it?
11 million.
11 million.
So it's typically a half a million is where we like to be. And we're going to, we're working with our customers to start collecting, but rate increases are, you know, are under, are at inflation, as Heather said. But it means that we have to collect some of the debt that's owed us. And so we're working with our customers to do that right now. But it's at an unprecedented level.
And then the water pipe replacement, how much of the piping is in the right-of-way versus the street?
The majority of the piping is in the street.
Okay. So is part of replacement, as you're looking at replacing the water pipeline, is it to also resurface the street? How have you looked at this? Is it a patchwork type of thing? What are your intentions on this?
Our intentions are, we have a very good relationship with the public service group, and they dictate to us, we have buy-in, of course, of how much the lane needs to be replaced. It's based on, there's a pacer level determining how much it costs. And then we look at the width and how much alligatoring is already in the street, and sometimes it's the entire lane. Sometimes it's more than that because we have to go both ways across the street. Say we're going down the passenger lane that you drive in, we go to the houses on the right, but we have to go across to the houses on the left. A lot of times, if we're going to collect the service, then a lot of times, this is a complete road resurfacing. But it is on a case-by-case, and we aren't even to that level yet. This was a huge effort just to get the funding. We haven't determined, you know, how many employees this will take. Can we do it in-house? Can, you know, is there going to be some assistance? How we work with the city? Because that's eight miles of road to her up in the city, you know, what is the construction schedule? So the first part was the hurdle of getting the money. We have a funding source now. So now it's kind of, they asked me for the money. Heather got the money now. Operations is taking over to determine what they need to do. And that's why it's a three-year ramp up, you know. This year, it's still at the typical two miles. We get to eight miles in four years?
At the end of fiscal '26.
At the end of fiscal '26. So we have a lot of planning, a lot of working, a lot of with different organizations to make sure we can get there. Now, we know we can. Money was the hurdle, in my mind. So there'll be a lot of work going forward with different departments in the city, as well as our customers, determine how we do that. We do have an idea where we want to start, because we know where we have the most problematic mains in town and things like that. So once we got the funding approved, and this has just happened recently, we'll start now working with the different departments. You know, MDOT has, you know, we have to work with them. There's certain trunk lines where you go across. But we have the internal expertise to put this project together from a management standpoint.
Well, of course, you're going to hear from me that I hope that you work seriously with the public service department. When we look at the amount of dollars that we have for roads, this is a way to enhance that and be able, if you're doing one side of the street and we can do the other, that would, you know, lessen what our cost would be for that. And if there's areas where the road is worse, that might be an area, too, where you might be able to come in and do your replacements if that works as well. So Mark, you're listening as I'm... Okay.
Yep. No, we fully understand, and we actually are going to try to, not try, but I've told them, reach out to other utilities. Are you going to be digging in this anytime soon? Because we're not in any hurry to hit a spot. If Consumers Energy is going to dig up Road X, and we're right next to the road over, then maybe we move over when they do it so that we minimize the construction. Sometimes that coordination, the coordination between the Board of Water Light and the city is very good. But sometimes other entities, you know, they don't tell you what they're up to, and, you know, we end up doing things twice. And that's what we're trying to get away from, you know, to reach with other utilities, you know, other underground providers, a lot of things under the street. So that's our intent as we move forward, try to get better at coordinating with everybody so the roads open one time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I first want to thank the Board of Water and Light for working with people during the last year or so. I know a lot of people personally and in the city and everywhere that benefited from that. So I appreciate that. I know it puts you at a disadvantage for collection and everything as well. And thank you for working with the people at Morris Park to get the lighting fixed. Calvin Jones helped out on that a lot. More lighting, LED, it was great. Everybody's so far happy. So thanks for working with us.
You're welcome.
So the other part is, you know, I remember a lot of the public comment, you know, in the last four years or so, and the priorities in the workshops, which is, you know, the inputs taken, and it was projected into the five-year plan or however long it is. Five year, six?
Six. Yes, sir.
So I guess I see other down here for, like, location and projects in the six-year plan, and it's like 16 million out of 118 million. I guess, is there anything in the budget that reflects the efforts for the thumb area project that's kind of being, that's a little bit, has challenges? And then does it, like, reflect any other ideas towards, you know, renewable energy?
Yeah. Could you tell me what the thumb area project is?
Isn't there a wind farm that's, or a solar?
Oh, yes.
That's like, we're hopeful for.
No, that's up and running. We've been getting energy from that for probably eight months now. That's, yeah, the thumb, yep, Huron County.
Were we going to maybe develop a area?
We have. That is our, the bulk of that energy is Board of Water Light energy coming from that farm up there. Out of the, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but out of the 120 or 30 megawatts, 70 of the megawatts are Board of Water and Light. All that power from those 70 megawatts comes back to Board of Water Light customers.
Okay. So just two follow-ups. So I do recall, and it was only like, I swear, like, less than two years ago, there was like a project that was stuck in township litigation.
That's the project.
And it's already, we're receiving energy from it?
Yes, yeah. It was delayed by two years because of litigation, you know, certain, you know, some people don't want to windmill their backyard. And Nextera is the company that built it for us, and they're the largest renewable wind manufacturer in the world. And they started in Tuscola County, went through site planning, permitting, and it got, then it was stopped. And so they moved to Tuscola County, and they did it again. In fact, there was 70 million in the ground, and the project got stopped. But we went through the court proceedings, prevailed. The project was built slightly smaller. The Board of Water Light got us slightly less than what we were anticipating, but we didn't have to pay for it. And so that's been online, I think, seven months now. So we are getting our energy from there.
That's a great report. What's the name of that? I just don't see it on here.
Pegasus.
It's which one?
It's Pegasus. Now, it wouldn't be on there because it's called a purchase power agreement. We don't own it because we can't get tax credits. So it doesn't pay for us to own it. Now, the energy is ours. It can't go to anybody else. So we partner with private developers, like our solar farm in Della Township, which is still the largest tracking solar farm in the state. It's owned by Consumers Energy, because they get a 30% tax credit for building it. We split that, and our customers save. Now, people say, you know, it's not yours. It is ours. It's got our name on it, but, you know, technically, the ownership is Consumers Energy. They can't sell the energy to anybody else. It's 100% ours. The wind farm is the same way, as well as one of the largest solar arrays going in in Chihuahua State County, that we are the majority owner in that when it comes to getting the purchase power from that.
Okay, that's a great.
That's about a year away from going commercial.
And then I guess my last question is, so if there's any expansion or anything new in the next six years, it would, as of now, unless there's some amendment, it would come from that other at the bottom?
Yeah.
If there's any feasibility studies, looking at microgrids and some of that newer technology, we do have money set aside for that. And you're correct, it would be in the common or other. Also, a big-ticket item in that line item is software implementation and development. So we still have our smart grid initiatives, be smart projects that we're finishing up. So some of that is technology improvements also.
Thank you. One last. We're also embarking right now, I don't know if the RFP is out, on battery technology, to start looking into that. So we have that. And we have a lot of funding set aside to start putting charging stations up around town for the electrical, electric vehicles that are coming into the Lansing area.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Vice President Hussein?
Just really quickly, I was actually just going to give an affirmation, but I wanted to underscore the importance of, and I believe the sincerity, I can feel the sincerity in terms of communicating with public services. But it's not just, it certainly is about financial cost effectiveness, that type of thing. But it's also about ensuring that your residential customers and your commercial customers, that their lives aren't disrupted or their businesses aren't disrupted unduly over a certain period of time. I know we've had, you know, in my time at my council, we've had a few projects come through the southwest end of the city, really disrupt, whether that be minor, major arteries, you know, that folks use to get to businesses on minor arteries like Pleasant Grove and West Holmes, only to have the city come through the next, maybe, year, or maybe even over the next two construction seasons. And it really, I mean, that can really be the death knell for a small business that's operating on just, I mean, razor-thin profit margins. So I truly appreciate you guys communicating, coordinating with one another, and ensuring that when possible, we're kind of moving the dirt, so to speak, once. So thank you. The other pieces, I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank, I see Calvin Jones in the audience, as well as Brina. I know as council members, we call on you guys often. And you guys over-communicate. You're very, very responsive, even when, even when, you know, the answers that we receive or your rate payers receive aren't necessarily what we or they want to hear. You guys always go direct. We appreciate that. And I think that's really the strength of Hometown Power. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pefley, I have one quick question for you. You spoke about expanding infrastructure for electric vehicles and things like that. Will you be implementing off-peak rates for that type of electricity use?
We will. And we've got some technology that's just about done. It's part of our smart meter, AMI, and our new billing system. We needed to have that in place before we could do what we call off-peak billing. Our intention is to save our customers money by giving them a lower rate at night. We're not going to increase the rate during the day. We're going to lower it at night with commissioner, I have to make a recommendation to my commissioners, because they're in charge of rate making, and say that if you charge your car at night, run your electric, run your dishwasher, your washing machine, we will give you a break in your energy cost to encourage them to help shave the peak that's seen during the day on some of these hot days. So we will be doing that, and
Your next rate strategy this time next year?
This time next year.
This time next year, okay.
Yep. And part of that, we'll be looking at some on-bill financing and things like that, too. Yeah, Heather's cringed at me. We'll be looking at other options that will help
She doesn't like when you go off script.
That will help our customers, you know, live and grow a better lifestyle in Lansing, in my mind.
Great. So I can start drying my hair at night, then? All right. I see, oh, one more question from Councilmember Garza.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Thanks for being here, you guys. I'll be brief. It's good to see you guys in person again. But just one quick question. When you brought up the charging stations, will the renewable energies be enough to support all the different charging stations, or will those still come off of the power plant, the new power plant?
It'll be a combination of both. Right now, we can, our gross generation is close to 500 megawatts, and we have about 220 megawatts of renewables. So by percentage, now the base generation is available 98% of the time, where renewables vary between, you know, solar's at 18% and wind's a little higher than that. So depending when you're using a charging station, you could be getting more renewables than baseload. You know, if it's windy and sunny out, that half of it would be coming from renewables. And, you know, if it's at night, there'll be less coming from solar. But that portfolio, we continue to grow that. We need to grow it at a rate that doesn't negatively impact the customers. It's a balancing rate. We want to maintain a double-digit rate, lower than our nearest competitor for our residential. And we typically are there, so we grow at that rate right now. But we can supply any customer in our service territory with 100% renewable energy today. Just call us up or log on to Greenwise program. It's a 10% premium. You get about 15% right now in your base rate. But if you want to move up to 100%, if your light bill's $100, it's going to go to 110. And then we guarantee that 100% of your energy is renewable. And we can do that for anybody. And if you sign up, and three months later, you decide for some reason, you know, you got to get out of the program, you can do that, too. There's no lock-in on it anymore.
Great. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. It's nice to see you in person.
Yeah, you as well, Mr. Pefley. While they are situating, our next presentation comes from the Capital Area District Library, and I'd like to invite the folks up from CADL. Cherry's throwing pens at me. Yeah. Scott, welcome back to City Council. And then I could have, Melissa, welcome, Melissa.
Said to make sure I was not on mute still.
Yeah, you're off mute. Very good.
My name is Scott Dimesh. I'm the executive director of Capital Area District Libraries, and I'm joined by Melissa Cole. She is the head librarian at our downtown Lansing branch, our South Lansing branch, and our Foster branch. So she is a very, very busy person. And also, I'm joined by one of our board members, Deborah Boomklist. And we are here tonight to, normally, we come here every year and give you an update on our annual report. And while no one wants to go back and relive anything that occurred in 2020, when we, as a library system, actually took a pause and looked back and reflected on what we were able to accomplish in 2020, it was surprising. I know a lot of us, when we were going through that year, we kind of put our heads down, and it was difficult to kind of take a big-picture approach and see the impact that you make on your community. But one of the things that we had to work with, being a public service organization and not having the public in your space, what did that mean for library service for our communities as well, too? So I'm just going to kind of hit some of the high points, and then Melissa's going to talk specifically about the three Lansing branches. And so when we went in early on in 2020 and looked at what library service meant for our communities, we had to look at how will people access our collections, how will people access technology, and then also, how will people access our communities through the library as well, too? So Melissa will go kind of into finer detail in our collections, but we were able to do that quite effectively. So we had to move to a similar to retail, to a curb and door-side pickup model. With that model, we were still able to circulate 1.6 million items in the year 2020. Normally, it's just over 2 million items, so it's not that big of a drop-off from where we were kind of pre-pandemic years as well, too. And when the stay-home, stay-safe order was in place, all of our staff were working from home, and we had to really push our digital collections. And luckily, we were a library system that heavily invested in digital collections. So these are eBooks, audiobooks, streaming movies and music. And so we had a pretty robust collection in place, and that circulated just over 700,000 items in 2020, probably one of the largest circulation probably one of the largest circulations of any public library system in the state of Michigan as well, too. So we were able to meet that demand, and as you'll see in our annual report, it's in your packet, starting on page 13. What we did is, we took a lot of personal stories from our users throughout the year as well, too. When people came in to pick up their items, we just decided to get brown grocery bags, and those brown grocery bags kind of turned into a thing. We heard from a number of parents that when they brought those brown bags home, it was like Christmas, coming to their family when they, because it was a surprise for their kids bringing back the library items. But it wasn't just access to our materials. We knew that our communities needed access to technology as well, too. So one thing that we saw during the pandemic, which every community saw, was that access to broadband internet wasn't nice to have, it was a necessity. And when people were not coming into our spaces, they were using the Wi-Fi outside of our spaces as a way to connect, whether it was for schooling, whether it was for work, whether it was to apply for a job, whether it was to apply for benefits. They needed access to the internet. So one thing that we did when we came back into our spaces back in June was, we already had hotspots that we loaned out. We applied for federal grant funding to purchase more of those hotspots as well, too. So we had just under 200 hotspots that we were circulating out. We circulated ones that were on the Verizon network, that were on Sprint, and that they were on T-Mobile, so that people knew when they brought these hotspots home that they were going to work in their homes as well, too. They also were not capped by data, so you didn't have to worry about when you brought it home. If you had your whole family using it, or if you had your students using it, or you were using it for work, you weren't going to be cut off at any time as well, too. And when we look at access to technology as a library system, we don't just look at it as access to broadband internet. We know that there's more to it than that. So we describe our approach to access to technology and the digital divide as a three-legged stool. One leg of that stool is access to the internet. The other two legs are access to devices and the training on how to use those devices as well. And that was no more apparent than when we talked to a lot of students. And one thing I forgot to mention at the beginning is, when we closed the year of 2020, we had the most library cards that we've ever had as a library system. And part of that was, we were able to work with the Ingham ISD school districts in our area and get each student a library card through what we call the Student Success Initiative. That's where they didn't have to come into our space. They could just use a student name or a student number and be able to get library materials and check out library materials as well, too. But in talking to those students, we heard from them that access to the internet was nice, but they didn't have the devices to use once they got back home. And the reason for that is, if they got staff, or if they got school-issued devices, they had to give them back at the end of the year. And so what we did is, normally, we, during the summertime, we have our summer reading challenge. We bring performers in to entertain kids and teens. We didn't do that in 2020. But what we did is, we took the money that we would normally pay for that, and we bought devices. And we put out a contest that if you completed the summer reading challenge, which is reading for 900 minutes or more throughout the summer, and you wrote us an essay, then you could be entered to win one of these 35 devices that we purchased. So they were Chromebooks, and they were iPads. We had over 100 responses, and they were truly moving. And so I just wanted to briefly share one of the entries from that. She gave me permission to share this. She said, "When the opportunity popped up via completing the summer reading program, I devoured the possibility. I started reading more so I could become eligible for this contest. This possibility will help kids like me who dread falling behind. During the school year, we received school devices, but when school ended, we gave them back. I felt as if I would never catch up. Solely because of this contest, I feel as if there is some hope for me to catch up and even further advance my learning. During these programs and your variety of books, I've become a high-reaching student as well as a reader." And there's, in our annual report, there's photos of some of the kids coming in to pick up their devices. Again, this was just one entry. All of the other ones were just as moving as well there, too. So we saw an impact that we could make by getting devices distributed out to kids. But it wasn't just kids. It was adults trying to re-enter the workforce or just needing a device to work on from home as well, too. So we applied for some federal funding through the CARES Act, and we were able to purchase Chromebooks and iPads actually circulate out to members of our community as well, too. And then later in early fall of 2020, we were able to bring the public back into our space, use our public computers as well, too, and that made a huge impact as well. But I talked about access to the internet, I talked about devices, and that third leg was training. And so we are heavily looking forward to bringing back training at the Foster Community Center in the space that used to be ITech, the Information Technology Empowerment Center. We are going to bring those classes back. Obviously, that was on pause from 2020. We were not able to do that, but I know Melissa and her staff are working towards bringing that back in late 2020, or 2021, and continuing that in 2022. But it wasn't just technology programs. We also looked at small businesses and how we could help. And if you remember, small businesses during the early part of COVID, there was those who had an e-commerce model and those who didn't have an e-commerce model. And the ones who didn't have an e-commerce model set up, their businesses were set up to fail. And so what we did is, again, we applied for another grant. This was through the American Library Association and Grow with Google, which is Google's arm of getting out into communities. And we were awarded this grant, and our grant was to help 50 small businesses set up an e-commerce site for themselves. And so we took the money. The money was intended to hire someone to lead these programs. But when we hire librarians, Melissa can verify this, we call them Swiss Army knives. They can do everything. They can lead a storytime, they can also teach an e-commerce course. And so these courses walked a small business through setting up a Shopify account so they could take payments and actually have their business set up online. And we had, like I said, we helped over 50 small businesses take part in this four-week course. And then we also, there was a waiting list, so we also offered another four-week course later on in the year as well, too. And so that training, again, wasn't just for students, it was for small businesses as well, too. And for access to our communities, we work with several small, or several community partners to be able to bring their services out in the community as well. We partnered with CADA so that we could circulate CADA bus passes. We've heard fantastic feedback from our members that this is the way that they can actually afford to take public transportation by checking out with their library card. We also partnered with Potter Park Zoo so that you could check out zoo passes through our libraries as well, too. But when we were looking at our members, we also saw there are some members that are being left behind, and some members that were actually being blocked from using the library. And what I mean by that is, we charged overdue fines for items if you brought them back late. What our goal was to actually get you to bring your items back in time. But when we were doing some of the research, we found that there were over 13,000 individuals that were essentially locked out of using the library because they accrued $10 or more in fines, and they just stopped using their library card. And when we looked at the data, we mapped where those individuals lived along with the CDC's Social Vulnerability Index, and it was almost a perfect match. And this was throughout Ingham County where this was happening. So what we're doing this year, we planned for it in 2020, but what we're doing this year is, we're going fine-free. We've already accounted for it in our budget, and we found smarter ways that we can actually entice you to bring your items back on time without financially punishing you. And that's going forward. But what we've also done is waive the past fines on any of those individuals as well, too. So we're going to start, you're going to start to see that more and more in the media as well, too. But it's our way of re-engaging with individuals that maybe they didn't bring items back on time. It's not a problem anymore. You can continue to start to re-engage with the library and use the library again as well, too. So overall, there's a lot of information I shared, but it was, once we went back and looked on 2020, it truly was an engaging and moving year with us. And to go specifically more into details on Foster, South Lansing, and downtown Lansing, person who does a lot of work, Melissa Cole.
Hello, everybody. So usually, I come here and I talk about data and stats, but I mean, 2020 was a very unusual year, so I'm not going to talk about our data or our stats for 2020. What I'm going to talk about is what we did in the library, because it was a hard year for our staff, and it was a hard year for our patrons. So we were able to provide limited service at the Lansing branches beginning in June. We had door service at South and downtown, and curbside at Foster. We were happy to provide what service we could while taking great care for the safety of staff and patrons. We offered print from anywhere at downtown and south. Patrons could send prints from their devices, and we could print them off, and patrons could schedule a pickup. Because browsing was not available, we provided grab-and-gos. Patrons told us a few details about what they wanted, and staff selected items that they may be interested in, and it was very successful, especially with kids. And that's kind of what Scott was referring to when he said it was like Christmas. It's like you get your bag, and you don't know what's going to be in it, so it's a big surprise. Staff developed very creative take-and-make projects and storytime-to-go kits that patrons could request. Staff developed online programs like virtual D&amp;D programs, virtual writing groups, and virtual film discussions. They also participated in cattle-wide virtual programming like storytimes, trivia, recipe swap, escape rooms, and coding programs all online. We had to reimagine how to provide the services that we had previously provided in person, and staff did an excellent job working through the kinks and creating quality content that met our patron needs. We eventually introduced computer access by appointment, although most were walk-ins at South Downtown. And Foster, we didn't, weren't able to provide that service. Through this service, we were able to have patrons in the library and provide them with access to technology. Despite all these great services, staff really missed our patrons. We missed seeing them every day, so it was hard to keep staff morale up because that was our biggest loss in 2020 is not being able to see our patrons. And we know that there's some that we probably will never see again, and it was really sad. We worried about them, we missed them, and like I said, it was one of the hardest things of 2020 is not being able to see our patrons in person. We didn't lack for work. When the library was empty, we had plenty to do. We worked on projects that we wouldn't normally have time to do. We completed an inventory of all three branches and ensured that the collection is in good condition with accurate records. We reorganized our supplies so that they were more accessible, and we reduced overpurchasing. At downtown, we built a stage in the children's area with grant money we received in 2019, and it'll serve as a play space for kids and a stage for performers. We rearranged the children's area to accommodate the stage and a play space. We also purchased new shelving unit to highlight our new children's book collection. We also moved other parts of the collection to make them more user-friendly at downtown. At south, we moved parts of the collection, too. We did lots of moving of the collection to make them more accessible and user-friendly. And we took two shelves, two units of shelves and transferred them downtown and used them there because they would be of better use there, and it expanded our children's space to make it a little bit bigger. Julian Van Dyck, a local artist, installed a bunch of art at South Lansing, and it's absolutely beautiful. Yes, patrons and staff were thrilled with it, and it really makes a difference in the space. And although I did not get to Foster until January 2021, if you guys go to Foster, you'll now find it much changed. We did a lot of work on it. And it's a bright and inviting and welcoming library with a collection that fits the space. And as Scott mentioned, we're also working on what we are now calling the Foster Labs, and staff are currently painting it, so, and putting a lot of energy and time into it. So it's going to be great. We also maintained some important partnerships. We partnered with the Parks and Rec, delivering books and activities to the learning labs at Foster every week. We also worked with the Girl Scouts Outreach to get kits to the girls so they could participate in Girl Scouts from home. We also created virtual content for events like Virtual Baby Fair and the ISD Special Education Fall Fair. Staff reached out to schools and preschools and provided virtual visits. And one of the best things to come out of the pandemic was our partnership with the Lansing School District through the Student Success Initiative, which gives a library card to every student at Lansing School District, so they have access to our digital content and physical items, physical collection. So, but the very best thing that came out of the pandemic, if anything like wonderful could come out of the pandemic, was the impact that we made on our patrons. And I have a couple of stories that, I ended up keeping a file of all the stories and all the comments that we got from our patrons, so I'm just going to read a couple. One patron said, "I really appreciate all you have done for my children, and it's been hard financially during quarantine this year. And as a single mother, it got very difficult to make any payments to anything besides rent and food. But what you did is more than appreciated and helps me out more than you know. Reading and movies is how we are all surviving all of this. Again, thank you for all you guys do at the library and for our community." And also, I just want to say a giant thank you to cattle for the absolute gift you have been to my family during this pandemic. Our Foster library pickups have become a weekly outing we all look forward to in my house. We loved the library before, but you all have gone over the top to keep us connected and reading in this pandemic. Your storytimes-to-go are such a special time for me and my little guys. My four-year-old can't even wait until we get home to open the bags. I hope you all know how much you matter and what a gift you are to the community. Thank you." And one of my favorites is, "What would we do without our libraries or our librarians?" Thank you. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you, that's quite a bit of information. Appreciate it. Do we have questions, Councilmember Wood?
Just a couple of quick questions now. Is library fully open for access in all the branches?
It is, and that was, the lighting's probably good in here, so you can't see the amount of gray hair that I have built up in the past year. But I mean, that was something that we truly struggled with. As Melissa said, you're balancing staff safety with the safety of the public, and so we took kind of a slow and cautious approach. It was curb and door-side, then what do we need to come in? Public computers, and then open to the public. And then with the MDHHS guidelines going away, fully open to the public as of June, so.
Okay, thank you. The next is, with the hotspots, how long are patrons allowed to have the hotspots for?
They're allowed to have them for two weeks unless they're, and then if you want them longer, you can check to see if there's a hold queue. There probably is a hold queue for those. But one of the things that we're working on is getting some specifically for students as well. So we have, Melissa mentioned the Student Success Initiative. We have some working with specific schools where there is a need for students with home internet access issues to have these extended lone hotspots that could go out for the entire school year as well.
And then are there any, and again, because we've been through the pandemic, but are there any new things that you're loaning out? I know each year you come with different things that you've created to be able to loan out, so I'm just wondering if there's anything new added to that.
Yeah, there, so we did add new technology like the Chromebooks and the iPads. We haven't necessarily expanded it beyond like the musical instruments and some of the other things that we have. Probably the most popular item since coming out of the pandemic and as things become more open is we circulate American Girl dolls, and there's a whole collection of those, and you could not imagine how popular those are with our collection. But for that one, we mainly use the time to replace the ones that we needed to replace, and then probably this year and then in the next year, add new items as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, good to see you guys again. Now, I guess I just want to jump on with the 50, the hotspots that you have. Are those just utilized in the Lansing area? Are they like Verizon, AT&amp;T? I mean, are there different spots in the city where they don't work as well?
There are. So what we did is, we had a group of staff who went through and tested each provider, and they used library services for each. So, you know, they would go into a specific area on Verizon, T-Mobile, or Sprint, try to download an eBook, try to download an audiobook, try to stream some of our content. Just kind of how people would use it if they were using library services, and we tried to match it for that. So if someone goes into our, and we try to help people with that as well, too. So if someone wants to know what would be the best for their area, they can reach out to us and do that. Otherwise, if they know, you know, Verizon works in my area, they can request one of the Verizon hotspots as well, too.
Okay, great. Now, the 50 small businesses, the grant that you received, is that just, is that the Ingham County area? Is that just strictly Lansing?
We worked with SBDC, so the Small Business Development Center. It was primarily Lansing, but we did have some businesses that were outside of Lansing as well, too. It was a combination of bricks-and-mortar stores, but also some that were at-home businesses as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Vice President Hussein?
If I missed it, I do apologize. First of all, thanks for being here and all the incredible work you guys do for the CADL. If I missed it, I apologize. One of the things that we hear, we have fantastic groups, obviously you guys know this, in the city of Lansing doing some really incredible work. And one of the things that they sometimes struggle with is meeting space. And so I know you have public meeting rooms and things of that nature that are part of your branches. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, how do you need to be, do you need to be a cardholder? What's capacity? How do we apply? How do we get into those meeting spaces?
Sure, so we are bringing those back. That's probably one of the most requested services outside of just normally using the library. We're looking to bring those back in the fall of this year. We're looking to, to bring those back in the fall of this year. So starting in September, we're going back to our regular open hours and then bringing back a lot of our other services like booking meeting rooms. And for that, you do need a library card to book those meeting rooms, and then you just contact your local library, and they would actually walk you through the entire process.
Okay. And the only reason I know about those meeting rooms is that we actually meet, Melissa and myself, as part of the Lansing Harmony Celebration Steering Committee. So take off the three hats in terms of head librarian. She's also a rock star in our steering committee and puts together one heck of a, we have a lot of components that are part of that celebration, but she is like, her and Meredith Johnson fully, you know, move the kids' part for it, and they're incredible.
If you remember, when we would come in the past, it would be a whole crew of us, and it could only be one Melissa Cole to be able to manage the library, so.
And then the other pieces, I just wanted to say thank you to you two. I don't know that people are clear on, on how close they were to losing their South Lansing Library. And there was a lot of work done behind the curtain. I want to thank Councilman Garza as well. He advocated, like I haven't seen anybody advocate, in order to keep that in South Lansing. I think you two understood, no matter who the messenger was, that, you know, it might just not work out. You all said it has to work out. A library in that space that was accessible to all, and again, one that was accessible to groups of people that truly need those services to help scaffold them for them, you know, from their circumstances, you guys were unequivocating. It, we're going to stay here, we need to stay here, and you did whatever you had to do to make that happen. So I wanted to thank publicly you all, as well as Councilman Garza, for making that happen. Thank you.
Let me thank you for your support.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I just really want to hearken back to what you said earlier about the forgiving the fines, because it's huge.
It is.
It is really huge. I mean, when we, when we look at what I would call the high cost of being poor and the, the fines and fees that we tax people with who are the least able to, to handle that, and I'm so thrilled that you actually did a hotspot map and said, "Okay, well, a lot of these are from neighborhoods where they don't even have a primary mode of transportation outside of," you know, so I just, I think that that's just
Thank you.
very, very commendable for you to have taken that, ran with it, and, and then continue with that empathy.
Thank you. And it, it's important to look at those things and say, like, is there a better way of doing business rather than basically, people are already paying with their tax dollars for library service, why should they be charged again if there's a better way that we can get those items back? And, and while it was a revenue stream, it should not be, have been a revenue stream, and so we were able to cut back some of our things because it was important for us, that library access for everyone, regardless of whether you could afford to pay your fines or you couldn't.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm an avid user of your digital services, so I appreciate the services Kettle brings to this community, but for everything you did during the pandemic, I know countless parents were served by the resources and services you provided, so thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for everything you did over the last year.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution, reappointing 19 individuals to various boards and commissions. And I'm pulling it up here on my screen. We are looking at Ronald Wilson on the Board of Public Service, Barbara Lawrence and Stephen Purchase on the Board of Fire Commissioners, Holly McDermott on the Board of Police Commissioners, Michael Redding on the Board of Review, Lisa Speaker on the EOCC, the Elected Officers' Compensation Commission, excuse me, Daniel Barclay on the Electrical Board, Curtis Sonnenberg on the Historic District Commission for LEPFO. We're looking at Charles Mickens and Price Dobernik for the Local Development Finance Authority, Benjamin Bachan for the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors, Scott Gillespie and Yvette Collins for the Park Board, Mike Dambroski and Nate Scramlin for the Capitol Area Transit Authority Board, Derek Milo and Nathan Triplet for the Planning Board, Farhan Bati and John Ruge. And that's Ruge, excuse me. And those are the 19 reappointments that are being considered. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. I would move the resolution for these reappointments.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just very quickly, you know, when we bring people in for these types of appointments, obviously initially, there, there's this recognition, right, of the work that they've done. It's us, you know, recognizing, kind of awarding that work, recognizing the fact that they're going to be, you know, that we believe there'll be incredible access to these respective boards. And then when we don't bring them in, I almost feel like sometimes we don't, we kind of miss the opportunity to underscore their service, to thank them for the work that they have actually done as part of, or as a member of those respective bodies. So I just want to, if anybody that is being reappointed is listening, I just want you all to know that we recognize the work you all do. We know you are volunteers, the packets that you have to, you know, go through, and then the, the meetings that you have to make, and the emails that you have to respond to, and the public engagement that you're a part of. Sometimes that, we know it's incredibly thankless, but we certainly appreciate your work. And if we could, as an example, recognize each one of you for, for the respective work you do on these boards as part of resolutions of recognition or whatever, what have you, you know, we would certainly do that. But again, I just want to, it's just so unceremonious, but I know these people are doing great work, so I want to, I wanted to just take the opportunity to thank folks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I realize the intent is to move this as a, as a whole, but I do, I do have a concern with one of the appointments, reappointments. So could we move to separate? Because I, I still firmly hold the belief that, that we should not have family members serving on boards at which, in, in a department where their family member is working, and I fully get that at this point now, this father is no longer, he's retired, but there is an active litigation that names this person, and then we're putting their son back on the board in the office where that litigation is currently alive. So I would move to separate out that particular appointment to the fire board.
Who is it?
It's Stephen Purchase.
Okay, there's been a motion before us to separate that question. Ms., will the clerk please call the rule?
Do you want to roll call?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Spadfor.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Um.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Motion carries. First up, are the 18 appointments minus Stephen Purchase? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the appointment, the reappointment of Stephen Purchase to the Board of Fire Commissioners with a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, we'll need a, I guess the motion still applies. Go for it.
I would propose that we, if possible, table this one to discuss next meeting, so for councilmembers like you, if you did not ask for a number with the situation and a potential conflict, can we give recommendations about how to just have everybody speak about some type of potential litigation? Thank you.
Oh, they can't hear you, Mr. Jackson.
That's right.
You're muted.
I would propose that we table it so that councilmembers can get more information about the proposed conflict and understand what's going on.
Motion table is not debatable. Would the clerk please call the, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the nays have it, the motion will not be tabled. We will continue discussion. Councilmember Wood.
Do we have a motion on the floor to?
Yes.
So who's made the motion?
Oh, I was carrying it forward. Mr. Vice President, will you make the motion to approve Mr. Purchase?
So moved.
Now we do.
Okay. Now, speaking to the motion, you know, we had Mr. Purchase, who has been representing on the board for this, for his term. We even had him into the Public Safety Committee talking about the new rules that were, we just recently approved for the fire board. I don't see any reason why that we can't move forward with this appointment, along with the fact that the, the Board of Commissioners has nothing to do with the lawsuit, and it's not named in the lawsuit. So with that, I will be supporting his appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a resolution that is nunk pro tunk action based on COVID impact in 2020. Recall back that when we disappeared from in-person meetings 483 days ago, we passed Resolution 202055 to provide for our meetings to be virtual, and in that resolution, it stated that after the state emergency declarations ended, each council member shall ratify their vote on every action taken during the period of time when meetings were held virtually. This resolution does that and would ratify every vote taken between March 16th and June 21st, 2021, virtually as valid, and the, the vote that was cast by individual council members. It's kind of a belts and suspenders thing, just in case the OMA changes were deemed not appropriate. So is there anyone that has any questions on this? Mr. Vice President, would I take a motion and then we have some questions?
So moved.
Moved by the Vice President. Councilmember Jackson.
Oh, I want to change my vote on something.
Nope.
I'm good then.
I would move to expel Brian Jackson from. All right. Any question, any further discussion? All right. I want to thank the City Attorney's Office and Sherry for keeping this on top of mind and making sure this worked out for us. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It better be unanimous. All right, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to give Lisa just a second to head down to the table. We have a charter amendment, Article II, Chapter 2, Sections 2-205 through 206, for the method of election, moving us to what is colloquially, colloquially referred to as ranked choice voting. And then Item G is another charter amendment for Sections 2-201, 203, 204, and 206, which would eliminate the primary election. It's my understanding that after consulting with others, the Attorney General's Office, it was advised that that also be part of this, this conversation. So Lisa, I'll turn it over to you to discuss the latest drafts that sit before us.
Thank you. So what you should be, what you should have before you is draft dated 7/12 of 2021. I'll first address the changes that I made to the ranked choice voting resolution. The changes made, as you mentioned, President Spadfor, were as part of some informal discussion and feedback that we received from a member of the Attorney General's Office. He made it very clear that the feedback that he was providing was part of the service that he provides to municipalities. He cannot speak for the AG's office as a whole, but he did provide some very helpful comments. One of the major changes is that we addressed Section 2-205, Sub 2, which speaks directly to the election of at-large members of city council. If you recall, the last time we spoke about ranked choice voting, there were some questions from this body as to whether it applied to at-large members and how it would affect those at-large elections, so this subsection deals with that. The other change that was made was a request of another council member to specify that the majority is greater than 50% rather than just saying a majority. And the only other change is in the ballot question itself. As you, as you likely know, the ballot question is limited to 100 words. Those 100 words include, "Shall this amendment be adopted at the end?" Which is four words that I was not personally expecting to be counted. So I had to eliminate something from the prior draft, which was in the parentheses of the ballot question. The, the parentheses used to say, "As soon as the city acquires voting machine equipment approved by the city election commission to implement this amendment." And so I just struck out to implement this amendment. So those were the major changes on the ranked choice. As part of the conversation with Mr. Elworth of the Attorney General's Office, he reminded me that the primary election is mentioned in multiple places in the charter. And if the idea of ranked choice voting is to eliminate a primary election, then there should be a separate ballot question that eliminates mention of a primary election throughout the charter. And that's what this ballot proposal and resolution does. Critically, the language in the ballot questions tie together. So if one passes and the other doesn't, then neither are implemented. If both pass, then they're implemented as kind of discussed in the resolution. So with that, I'll say that those were the major changes. I'm happy to take any questions, concerns, comments.
Mr. Vice President, did you make a motion? I can't remember for the life of me.
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion before us, so is there any discussion on these items? None? Councilmember Garza.
And you might have just answered it. Sorry, I was trying to look through all the, the pages that you submitted. Mr. Delain, he spoke earlier, and he mentioned that this is just to change an amendment for, or I'm sorry, to change an ordinance so that it can be put on the ballot to be voted. So we wouldn't be voting tonight to implement this for city council, this would just be approving it to allow the voters to vote?
That's correct.
Yes, this would be to, a proposal for the ballot to change the city charter, but for the electors to make that decision.
Great. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney?
I was just saying, I think you're shooting for November on this also.
Yep. So yes, it would be the November election.
November.
Yep. Councilmember Jackson, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Just a, a little clarification on the conversation to require that second language to amend when the intent is clearly to add it, and by adding it would, I mean, did we, do we have to do that? Obviously we do because you're doing it, but just a little more info about why we have to do the, eliminate the primary election. Why can't it just be like one thing? If the people say yes, that's the intent, and therefore take out the mention of the invalidated system.
Sure. Well, there's a number of sections of the charter that mention a primary election, and so just due to the sheer number of articles and sections that we're addressing with the primary, it was viewed as, you know, from my perspective, cumbersome and a little bit confusing to try to throw it all into one. And it, in my opinion, and in discussions, again, informally with the Attorney General's Office, was cleaner to separate it out specifically because while ranked choice voting does in practice eliminate a primary election, it's not necessarily the main purpose, and so that's why we separated them.
Jim, did you want to add anything?
Just, Lisa's worked with George Elworth, who's in the Attorney General's Office for a long time, and under the Homeros Cities Act, charter amendments are spelled out and the procedures are spelled out, and one of the procedures is to go to the governor for approval. Now, right now, this is a five-vote item. If you, if you go to the governor's office for approval, which will eventually happen and it gets set back, then it's, it becomes a six-vote item. The governor is only going to act generally if the attorney general says yes. So we listen to the attorney general's basically the answer to that.
And I think Lisa made a very good point. This was informal comments from somebody who works at the Attorney General's Office, not input from the Attorney General's Office. I may have misstated that at the front end of this. Yep, go ahead, Jeremy. Councilmember Garza, six.
All right, thanks, Council President. So I did hear, speaking back with Mr. Delain, he mentioned that if this does get approved, he's going to get out there and work the messaging. Now, is there any, if this does get approved and, and it comes back from the governor and we pass a six vote and it gets approved, is there, again, what's, what's the city's method on getting the message out to, to the voters of how this new voting is going to be implemented in the city?
I don't know if that's a question for the City Attorney's Office. My guess would be that's more of a question for the city clerk and how ballot proposals are announced and explained. Our role is simply the legal aspect of drafting the, the ballot proposal itself.
And we have a ballot proposal on the May, on the August election that's coming up as well, related to the millage. So we, we did that this time around, so we'll do the same process the next time around if this gets that far. We do not have a motion before us, so I will ask the Vice President to make a motion on Item F.
So moved.
All right. Now we have Item F before us. We'll just count all that discussion as part of that one. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, so this is, this has been a really tough one for me. I've had a lot of really good conversations with Jim Delain, Hugh McNichol, Ryan Smith, there's a number of advocates out there that are working on this, Max Donovan, and we certainly appreciate all, all of your work. It, I, I have struggled with this for a few reasons. I have struggled with this for a few reasons. Number one, I struggle with some of the language in the resolution. If you look at the second and third, whereas is, it reads as, it says, whereas has been determined by, by whom, right? I think the implication is that by us and that we believe this method to be superior. But in any event, it's been determined by, or determined, sorry, that the current methods of election codified by charter contribute to insufficient choice and participation for residents. And then the third is whereas has been determined that other methods of election can be more efficient while providing citizens with a superior range of options. Again, I think the implication is that we believe that this voting method is superior and that we're suggesting a yes vote based out of necessity. I'm just not, I'm just not there yet. I'm, I'm generally supportive of putting this before people if they have the necessary, the requisite information to vote in a meaningful and purposeful way. But I certainly don't want to apply as if I as an elected in the city of Lansing am suggesting that this is a superior method. Candidly, I even spoke to Jim Delain at length not too long ago, and I shared some of my concerns. And with all due respect to Jim, he couldn't even beat back a number of my concerns. We talked a little bit about, you know, some of the, even some of the data that he provided to us today, but obviously we've had an election in the city of New York since, which is a mayoral primary, and they had a number of issues. And one of the issues was concern and frustration regarding voters and the fact that precinct workers weren't even able to truly help guide them through the process. They, they weren't really in the know, they were frustrated, created a number of issues. We know that Maine, back in 2016, I believe, became the first state to allow for this in federal elections. And since then, there have been a number of nonpartisan objective polls that have been put out. And they have seen that, although it passed substantially in the state of Maine, they've seen voter satisfaction go way down, voter confidence go way down. The, the, the wait in lines have gone way up, frustration at polling centers have went up. If you look at what they're doing in Alaska, which is also going, they're going to implement this statewide, I think they're a little closer. This deals with federal elections, obviously, but they're not getting rid of the primary. What they're actually doing is using, I believe, ranked choice voting through the primary, or that might be working reverse, actually. It might be an open primary, and then they might be using ranked choice voting after that. The reason why those types of things are a little bit more, I think, appealing to me is that if you saw as an example what just took place with regards to the mayoral campaign, I'm sorry, the mayoral forum, and maybe even some of these more neighborhood-specific forums for our at-large and for our ward reps, the fields are so crowded, it has been really difficult to separate, you know, and to distinguish between candidates. They're given one to two minutes because, again, the, the forum is so crowded. If you're talking about door knocking, if you're talking about mailers, if you're talking about calls, if you're talking, it's difficult to really distinguish one person from another because you can't get deep into the issues. And I think that's one of the purposes the primary serves, is to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, but then truly to separate those folks that are serious candidates with the requisite experience from the others, and then really have a meaningful couple of months before that general to dig deep into the issues and determine who is really going to be able to guide the city forward. So, so I don't want to pass something that implies that I am at, you know, at this place that I think this is a superior election method because I'm just not there. That being said, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was thinking and reading and as you were talking, this, this isn't our only bite at the apple. This does come back. Is that correct? Or no? This goes to the AG?
This, after, if you go to...
Jim, you're on mute.
You're in a council, so if council adopts it, it goes to the AG?
Yep.
For submission to the governor, and then it gets placed on the ballot.
Okay, so, okay.
We did an informal review with the AG at this point.
As, as, for me, as somebody that teaches democracy, access to government, I'm concerned by a number of things that I'm seeing play out in the country. Again, this is a very unproven election method, if you will, and what we're actually seeing is the reverse of the, of the intention. We're actually seeing voters disenfranchised, particularly our senior voters, and that's very, very concerning to me when they experience that type of voter frustration and then they're just throwing their hands up and saying, "I'm not going to vote." So I'm just, I'm really concerned. Okay, those are my comments for now, thanks.
Councilmember Dunbar, then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I did read the, the stories from New York, and it's concerning. I was wondering if you could expound on why you thought that maybe there would be more lines at the polls with this? Because I, I was thinking that with the amount of absentee push that we are doing right now, that may, that wouldn't be the case, but what are you, what are you hearing?
So out of, so out of Maine, there's been quite a bit of study, and what they've said is that for each, they actually have it down to a second and minute. So they've, they've found that for each actual race that people are voting for, it has actually expanded the time by so much. So what I'm saying is that the people that are going there are taking longer to vote. And so that is actually increasing wait times for folks. I don't know how that interfaces with this push for absentee. I don't know what that does. I'm just saying that's what they're saying.
All set, Kathy? Yep. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. A few things that, I guess I'm not officially going to propose this amendment, but maybe we strike the first three words and it starts, whereas the current methods of elections codified by charter may contribute to insufficient. And with the second one starting at, whereas other methods of election may be more, so it takes out, you know, our stamp of approval. And it still lets the people vote because I think that is one of the most serious things that we can consider as council, because all we're saying is people vote. We're not saying we support it or not. I guess one way not to support it would be to not let the people vote, but that's, you know, everybody has their choices. As far as having a crowded field, I think that ranked choice voting goes more favorably for that because, one, it allows constituents more time all the way until November to really hear everybody. Because if you eliminate some people at the beginning and it's like, oh, I wish you came, I wish I met you before, or my person I wanted that I voted for in the primaries is a big douchebag now, and I want to vote, I wish I voted for you in the past, or whatever it is. So it actually allows everybody the whole time to campaign and to get to know people and people to get to know them. You know, save money, whatever, that's not the main focus, but it is something also. But the main focus should be let the people vote. So I think, I mean, it would be a pretty easy fix. I don't want to change anything, but if we did that, it could take, maybe you would vote for it. But I'll be supporting that.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Garza?
All right, thank you. So I agree, I think the people should be able to decide, you know, not us, obviously, but the people should take it to the ballot. Now, in order to get it to the ballot, this doesn't pass, is there, there's probably still not enough time to go and get the signatures to take it to the ballot for this year. This November, correct?
What was your question, Councilmember Garza? I think I was just trying to figure it out.
So I, I agree, it should be up to a vote by the people, but what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, is it too late now for them to get a ballot initiative, like get the signatures and have it still in time for the November?
I'm looking at the clerk, who is not, he's looking at his calendar next. It's probably pretty tight for November. Yeah, you got to get it on, you got to get it to us by August 9th is the deadline to get something on the ballot, is that correct?
Petitions is a couple weeks over.
Oh, and we're a couple weeks before August 9th. The answer is no.
All right, all right, thank you.
We do, we have a suggestion of an amendment, but not a formal amendment, and Sherry's pointing out to me too, we have another meeting before, we have to prove it on the 9th of August, which we have a meeting on that day too. So if you want to table this for the next time and take a look at the language, we can entertain that possibility as well.
Well, I guess I would ask, I mean, I don't know if Councilmember Hussein's comfortable answering, would that change your mind if we did it? Because that's really only deleting three or four words.
Can you, can you repeat the language, please?
All right, so on your first paragraph, it would say, whereas the current methods of election codified by the charter may contribute to insufficient choice and participation for residents.
That's actually the second one.
Okay, yeah, the second whereas, but the first one you're concerned about, and the second one you're concerned about, the third whereas, whereas other methods of election may be more efficient while providing citizens with a superior range of options.
What if we put, I would be more comfortable if we said, whereas it has been argued that the current methods of election codified by charter?
And I would support that, and I think it would still move the process to the AG and then ultimately get it on the ballot.
Any change to the third whereas?
It would be the same, right? So...
Okay. Do you still want the charter may contribute and other methods of election may be more efficient? His may suggestions?
No, so mine is...
We'll have printed copies of this for you all, Council, while we get there.
No, just that it has been argued that other methods of election can be, can be more efficient while providing citizens, citizens with a superior range of options. Or am I not going further enough, far enough into that whereas?
The second one?
Yep.
So change it to where it has been argued that the current methods of election codified by charter?
May contribute.
Okay, so add the may there. The third whereas, whereas it has been argued that other methods of election can be or maybe?
Maybe.
So maybe, so put the maybe in there too, okay.
Okay, we have a amendment from Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor of the amendment, are we clear what it is? I want to make sure everyone understands, we're voting on the amendment to the second and third whereas is to ambiguitize the language a little bit. All right.
And this is in the first resolution?
First resolution.
Yep, that will amend 2-205 and 2-206 regarding the methods of election. It's not, we're not changing that.
We're not changing that.
We haven't discussed in the second, which speaks to the primary.
All right, so all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the amendment, the actual resolution in front of us, we will return to discussion. Is there any further discussion on this item? I will say I'm a little bit dubious of this method of voting myself. I've spent some time, as Vice President Hussein has, researching it. I think we have some, sort of a de facto ranked choice voting in the city of Lansing through our primary and general system whereby the choices are narrowed down. But, that being said, I was here, I'm very interested in what the people have to say, so I will be supporting this after the discussion tonight. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Item G, the charter amendment for dealing with elimination of primary election. Mr. Vice President?
I would move the resolution.
Motion has been made. I don't see much need for further discussion, these are tie-barred to some extent, so if there is other discussion, please speak now or...
Do we want to, do we want to make the amendments to the whereas?
Well, if they want to, they have the, the second, third are the same whereas.
Yep. I would entertain a motion to amend those whereas is from Councilmember Betts. Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Sherry, you've got the changes? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Yeah.
Ayes have it. Next up is the motion before us, which is approval of Item G. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk would, I'm sorry, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Most, the ayes have it, and I do want to thank Lisa. I know this was brought to us by others and a lot of work went into the front end, but Lisa in the City Attorney's Office has spent a lot of time making sure that if this does make it to the City Attorney General's Office, that we have at least crossed as many t's and dotted as many a's as possible. So thank you very much, Lisa. Next item on our agenda is a closed session. Mr. Vice President?
Sure. Pursuant to MCL 15.268 and MCL 15.268, sorry, Section C and E of the Open Meetings Act, I hereby move that we recess in a closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lansing and the TMS 243, as requested by the city, and to discuss the active litigation, city of Lansing, Michigan versus Purdue Pharma LP et al.
That is a proper motion. Will require a roll call vote and six members voting in the affirmative. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Motion carries, it's time.
You can't come with us then, Brian. For those members of the public, we will recess to closed session. We will come back out here to adopt the resolutions potentially and then adjourn for city council. Thank you.
How you doing, Ken?
I'm good, how are you?
All right. Hanging in there with the, with the journal and still, keep your head above water, huh?
Well, you know, what about...
I know, I see a constant turnover there, and as soon as somebody gets good, they jump ship and go elsewhere.
What's the guy's first name here, Mr. Roughly?
Yeah.
He said, and he's never been one of these guys.
No, I, what really ticks me off is a subscriber, a print subscriber paying $61 a month.
They shouldn't have to.
Is that, you know, you guys are profitable.
I mean, everybody gets money.
And your profits go to Detroit.
So how long you been going now?
At our expense.
Well, I officially retired to Detroit, January 2nd. I know these trips. I mean, it's been, it's been the next September. Even then, they hadn't been very...
It's, it's just a mess. We, we are profitable in this one. It's a, it's a little...
I know, but it's, it's, it's profitable. It's, and it's, it's...
It's a combination of people paying for it to, to, to...
So he's bad, okay.
That's pretty bad, Republic Service, PBS could do better than...
Well, it is, yeah, when people are jumping ship for a PBS station.
Yeah.
Tell you what, you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, and then you've got people being pushed by their property. Detroit, this is technically a, like a, it's operating as part of the jam, and there's lots of shit ordered to the business, so, you know, you can take your company property.
And they take all the historical knowledge, but it's, it was in a lot of history.
And they're endorsing, and they're endorsing that.
It got so bad, we had two offices.
What, Ralph Wilson?
Yeah, Ralph Wilson's left and he was...
He mad at work?
Ralph was a, was the guy that helped working new stuff together. And now it's a bunch of shit, and I know that every company was just a fucking old venture. And, you know, it's just, it doesn't seem, there's no, there's no traffic. It's like, don't do that, have a look at this report, you know, work at this instead of that. There are two people, man, social, two people that are in good status, and it's like, and it's, they got all those energy years.
And then you've got the customer service, we don't even go there. I mean, I, I get delivery, yeah. I mean, you can't even get a live person on the phone, I can tell you that. I get delivery and I've been in private messages with her, um, like four or five times in the last four or five months. My delivery comes anywhere between nine and 10, 11 in the morning. Of course, it's supposed to be 12:00, 13:00. I, I don't, I don't get them until 10 most days, so I'm not complaining so much that it gets there late. I'm sitting here just not consistent. It'll show up one day at 5:30 in the morning, it'll show up the next day at 1:00. And I can't even get an answer out of him as to why. I have a particular driver's on my route, can't get there when you're supposed to get there. I'm going to ask him, please.
Oh, no, I can tell you that. I always had scapula's partners to, 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 to walk in on the week.
Really, for most of the pandemic, I was, because I had to be close to him. But every week seemed like a road to the soul, coming up to the boss, third, fourth, and fifth, because they were upset, because they were...
Right.
You know, it's, 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 it's made in...
Right, right. Well, and you know, that is even more spiritual, personally, if you have, it's more than sending by a box. And usually, you get messages, private messages, for two or three, four days, but they're really concerned. Yeah, I'll have to let you get back to work.
We have a little bit of authorization to get an automated call to give you a code.
All that crap, yeah. Well, this ticked me off. I had an appointment today, but I actually left early enough that I didn't even pay for the appointment. She's got to pay the next time I go in. So I could get out of there in time to get home, to set up the Zoom meeting and be in on the Zoom meeting for this, so I could do public comment on ranked choice voting.
Right.
So I get home, I get the ranked, I get the Zoom, it won't set, it won't set. There's nothing, they have not publicly set that Zoom in.
Is that right?
Nothing I've seen. I'm probably one of the most informed people out there, and I've seen nothing. They said they stopped Zoom when they resumed the in-person meetings. They discussed it. They discussed whether to do or not. The last I heard, they were gonna continue to offer the Zoom at least until the pandemic resolved further, so that more people felt like they could come out without being risked. So I missed being able to do public comment. And then I had to turn around and drop everything and come here.
Well, I tried to, the couple of four hearing on Friday. So, I, I helped the judge over live stream, but it turns out, uh, because Lansing district closed, it was supposed to open until today. So the only way you can... Is, uh, eighteen? Did you want to two thousand nineteen? Uh...
Yeah, seventeen.
Four years ago.
Four years ago.
You remember on the...
Terrorize this one. Turns out the hearing... She wanted to live stream it because they were concerned with witnesses. Logging out to the live stream, to watching the testimony. You know, why, I mean, they just wait until the hearing is over and then put up the recording.
I could, I could handle it.
Yes.
Yes. You know? And here, I'm busy trying to call attorneys and find out what the hearings mean. Judges tied up, staffs tied up, nobody's answering the phones.
This is what I did here. I called Sherri, I texted Adam and Carol, and, "No, I can't get into the Zoom, what's going on?" Nobody responds.
Hello?
Well, I just had to jump in my car and come here, which means I didn't get any, or I didn't get it until whatever time this gets out. To get to your work.
Yeah, like that is own.
Hey, who?
Hello?
Are you there?
All right, hello, you're in here. One time I'll see. You doing okay?
So who's stealing your ideas about the, uh, Maho Cemetery, right? Is that gal?
Valerie Verber.
Polite to you on that?
No, she's not.
They didn't give you any credit, did they, in the paper?
I, I, if you want to see.
Did they give you any credit that you had come up with that idea years ago?
It, it's, it's a long story, uh, Earl.
Okay, well, I felt, I thought your name should have been put in there.
Well, she's a whole different ballgame from us. She has the right to be in the cemetery and do her tour, but the way it got presented was jusing to a lot of people.
Thank you for bringing to me on Wednesday.
Yeah, that was, you know, no notice. You know, it was like, get this email and your name is in there saying you're doing something you've never even been talked to about. Um, all right, so you're doing this whole thing to...
Yes.
That, right?
Everything, yep.
That would have been a good thing to get out to the public in advance also, along with the fact that there was no Zoom, because I, I left the meeting early without paying for what I was there for, and she tried to let me pay next time instead. So I could get home, so I could be on Zoom, so I could do public comment on the ranked choice voting. Get home, set up the Zoom, there's no Zoom. And they're already in the meeting and they're past public comment. So you showed me somewhere, if anybody showed me something that went out publicly saying the amendment. I can't tell you that there was anything publicly stated that Zoom was...
Is in the minutes, similar to Peter Spadeford's, but the first, first release.
You gotta be kidding me. You want my resume on this thing?
Uh, pretty much what you wrote on the other form.
No, on the other forms, I put my name, address, phone number in the resume. And they would have to put an agenda, I don't remember.
What does the topic?
That's the topic. Or you could do more than one. I mean, you can list all, you know? I think it's items. So you could do more than one item. I don't know if they, like, try and grow the spotlight.
Yep.
That's, that's dramatic. Spots that people come in. It's gonna be right there.
What if your topics are gonna be several things, so I could just put general for general?
Sure. General, city, city related.
Ken would be in a nice change.
Oh, I thought it was a bunch of...
Yeah, Claire.
It just fucked up, yeah.
Oh.
Well, I was kinda thinking, right, you have something that makes it... If you keep it like on the clipboard.
Oh.
And then, you know, for, uh...
Many of them will have it, will be...
Oh, so I feel like you're using...
Yeah, so I missed my chance, I missed my chance for dinner.
Oh, for dinner?
What's that? But yes, I will, I'll meet him at the cemetery at six thirty.
Okay, we'll try to walk slower fast depending on what we need to do to be there.
Yeah, that's what Patty said, was that, like, Christine has six thirty, I'm gonna have to do my job, two hours or... In order to be there, set the front room, clean up and get there.
Well, see, this is our second walking Wednesday. The first one we did, we went up Carney, and then we met with Smith Flo and the Sycamore Creek Church. Then we came back down.
And we were at number five.
Sunny, something came back down, Devonshire, met with the Lansing Area Church of Christ, and then back... So I didn't want to see them this year, you know, and, and I'd be still, be able to guess from him, Patrick.
I told Patty she needs to follow the box, because I don't know about him, but, you know, I got that, you know, like, usually, you know, I get your, like, emails, gosh, you need to do whatever. And then I just lay it to them because I know, like, maybe you admit, and a lot of times I don't even like it, so I just look. You know, I can't make it. So this email came through and I almost just believed it, it was out of... And it made her love that she's saying, and I told her that, and he's following, speaking to his officer or secretary, and she probably didn't see it. You know, I, there was like a one percent chance that I saw it. Yeah, it does. Nobody had reached out first and said, hey, do you wanna do this, can you anticipate? And it was just like, here's your name on this list, and you're, you know? Expected to... All right. I just wanna... Event, Annaliese.
Oh, okay.
Event, Annaliese.
Yeah.
Nancy's? Hey!
It seems they'll talk the same way.
Oh, I need to. They're in closed session. Oh, I didn't, I didn't catch that part. Yeah, they just went a little bit of... How you doing? All right, good. One of these days we'll get that batch in it. Yes, I'll give it to you now, so you guys. Okay. And, um, all right, yeah, I have to do my community event, too. We're having a picnic Sunday. Mine is like a month away, but I wanted it, people to get it on their calendars, because things are going on, so. Yeah. Were you here before? I got here about five thirty. I didn't know it wasn't Zoom. Well, I'm supposed to be reappointed to public service, but I wasn't sure if I heard my name on that. There's a list of nineteen names of people being reappointed, things I didn't see your name on there that I recall. Okay, maybe I'm in the next batch. Possibly.
Yes, they, yes, they did.
That was extremely frustrating. She has every right to do tours, she has every right to do the...
Right, so, they, she's... I don't know how much of the ideas that were, that came out of your, you, in your group, on the group.
Right.
You know, and how they are putting in, into place there, but I just thought that should have been...
Well, the, Ken, counting, counting, um, John, trying to have this too, you know, so the frustrating thing was that the way the reporter, the reporter may not familiar with things, but the way the reporter interpreted what she was told was a little wrong. She combined what we were doing with what Valerie's doing, it sounded like what we were doing just is what she did. And she, it was that, that's place. No, but we thought she would. I would have thought that she, you know... Yeah, that's Valerie though, that's Valerie's trend.
Where did, where she have proportion?
Historical society.
Yes.
What she did for top, the portion, the state historian, I'm not quite sure.
They know it came from law. Like, they drafted it.
But these, these are tours that are being done by the state capital. It had nothing to do with us, but it made it look like it was us.
But then the question is, is that?
No.
Everything's related to these files. Especially if you're not... You're not... See, actually make the packet, you have to be overseas. You're not even a packet.
So you're back on schedule, are you eating?
We've been, we all, we zoomed back into, we've been publicly, right, very personally, since then, for a month.
Orders are passive, covers...
First Thursday, you know, person.
You open it up there.
Coming out there.
Yeah. So, the only thing is, we have it, we have it down, we have it down, um, yeah. Well, I know Sherri's party happening, she's...
Get a table to bed, asking for recommendations, swinging, unless she even has both her company and another company, each thing.
But if we don't... So that's kinda what they do, they...
They say it's in your favor. Couple years, yeah, yeah, we don't, you know, provide any information one way or the other, we get the voting board, like, and we accept the client, like, going through, with...
So do you have anything planned between now and Labor Day?
We have a public get the cemetery picnic, so they... Anything you want, your own picnic, yeah, bring your own picnic, or else we're gonna have... Arby's sliders, chips, pasta, whatever. So you can eat our stuff, or you can bring your own stuff.
Yeah, you got a flexing app.
So that's, watch two thirty Sunday as a virtual... And then, um, doing a restoration project at the end of the month. Here's in the hole, it's, um, it's a pretty interesting, really, there was a guy who used to be in this movie, clearly, and saying...
These are named?
Oh. Someone there, um, state herald, and then the story about... He quoted him and mentioned nineteen forty-nine.
That is really nice.
Right, was unmarked by...
Are you calling me?
Well, there's a guy found to mark his monument, I say on a website.
Push.
Evidently, when this guy is feeling this...
Do you want me to just push it all the way to attorney?
To Maho Cemetery.
Out of committee?
Somehow ended up on a website. But this guy, so, I'm from California, he called us and said, hey, I found this monument, and he's buried in your cemetery, would you like this monument?
Oh, okay.
Was here, and I was talking about auctioneers, and so the guy had it on auction. They were just reading the building. And bring it to the cemetery, and on, you know, last weekend in the month, our conservation guys coming in and installing that month, resurrect two others on the site that are down, broken, and it's there. Yeah.
See, that one's actually twelve thirty, and...
He had, he had a business on the river, I remember, it was a restaurant bar.
So we do that again.
We used to, last time we searched on, there's no, just that one, it's like the trend down, and all my loan in here. So that's how we got...
Six forty-six, and the committee is back from closed session. I lost another one.
Oh, you lost two.
I lost two. All right, we're gonna stand at ease.
But you wanna, you wanna them all here?
Yeah, we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna stand at ease while wait for, uh, the two members that walked out.
Are they not aware that we have resolutions? Oh, we want to...
All right, we are back to order, right? Yes, okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is item H, a resolution for the Teamsters two forty-three supervisory memorandum of understanding. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so what we have before us is, is, sorry, a resolution for the memorandum, memorandum of understanding. I can't talk after that closed session. Um, it does, um, reflect a two percent wage increase. This would be retroactive, uh, to February first, two thousand and twenty-one. It would be effective for the duration of the CBA that is in place, which would, uh, I believe runs through January thirty-first, uh, of next year. Uh, this was built in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget that we approved at the end of May. With that said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Vice President, item aye.
Sure, so the bones of this are the exact same. Again, it's a two percent wage increase, retroactive, uh, back to February first, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, that being said, I would move the resolution.
Very good. The clerical, uh, resolution of MOU is a for us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. With that, at six forty-nine, the committee hall is adjourned.